Welcome to the Eugene City Council work session for July 25, 2012. Kind of a momentous occasion, maybe one of the, at least the last meeting for now in this room. We have a very packed agenda today and we are going to do our Track Town 12 appreciation and resolution as soon as our guests arrive. They are not quite here yet. And so we may just start out with the referral item and then move out of that if our guests arrive. And the goal, just so you know it, is that we get all the work done by 1:15 so that we can have a little celebration of this, of the City Hall. So, let's go to item B for right now, which is a resolution calling up for a city election. And I guess Glenn, we table it until today, so it's back on the table today?
It's right. It's back on, so the main motion is back on the table, which is the adoption of the resolution as it was presented to you in the council packet.
Okay, so...
Which packet?
Monday's packet.
You have to modify it.
What I want to do is read the language at the top without moving to amend.
Counselor Zelenka?
I move to amend section two of the resolution to substitute the following ballot title language. Can I read the whole thing? Can I read the whole thing?
Seconded, thank you.
I were efficient today. My goodness.
Thank you, second. Now I'll read it.
Okay, well, he paused.
The caption will read, "Advisory question on corporate/union constitutional rights and campaign spending." Ten words, actually nine words. Question, advisory question, "Shall Congress send to states constitutional amendment reversing negative impact of Citizens United case and limit independent campaign spending?" That is 20 words. The summary states, "This measure is an advisory question. Eugene voters are asked whether they support the Eugene City Council's request that Congress send to the states a constitutional amendment reversing the impacts of the Supreme Court 2010 decision in Citizens United versus FEC, Federal Election Commission. In Citizens United, the Supreme Court ruled that the First Amendment protects unlimited direct corporate and union spending to influence elections. February 15, 2012, the City Council passed Resolution Number 5055. That resolution stated that corporations, unions, and special interests should not have the same constitutional rights that natural persons possess. The resolution then stated, 'Action is needed to stop unlimited independent campaign expenditure by corporations, unions, and special interest groups, which resulted from the Citizens United decision.' Finally, the resolution asks Congress to send to states a constitutional amendment reversing the impacts of Citizens United. A yes vote on the measure supports the Council's resolution and requests Congress for the constitutional amendment, and a no vote opposes the Council's resolution and the request for a constitutional amendment."
So, I'm going to ask you all to take a breath and pause, and we will switch gears now, and we will go back to the first item on the agenda. And that is because our guests have arrived. And this is a work session on Track Town 12 appreciation and resolution. And I am going to welcome our guests, of course, and then turn this over to Assistant City Manager Sarah Maderi to begin this part of our appreciation and resolution.
Okay. It's really my honor to introduce and invite Vin Lanana and Greg Erwin up to the table for today's work session. I asked to introduce them. Renee Grube and I both served on the local organizing committee for 2012 and, to some degree, 2008. And I just wanted to say a couple of things about the two gentlemen sitting before you. There's times in your life where you look back and you go, "Wow, that was something really special I was involved in," and you kind of wish you had captured that moment more when you were in it. The experience through 2008 was one of those moments where, rare moments in your life, where at least I said, "Wow, this is really special." Like, I knew I was in one of those very special moments in Eugene and in this community and my life and career that I'll always look back on. It's one of those times where I felt like I was a part of a team and I was a champion and that everybody in this community was a champion, and I was really inspired by the work and felt committed for really the rest of my career and life here to be a part of Track Town. It's one of the things that when John talked to me about being the Assistant City Manager and we kind of talked through my scope of duties, I said, "Yes, I'll do all of that and I really want to stay involved in Track Town. It's very important to me, and I think it's important that the city is a key partner in that." So, that's why I introduced them. I think many of you probably saw in the paper today that Vin was inducted into the Track and Field Hall of Fame and Coaches Hall of Fame. And if they have a Hall of Fame for vision, passion, and inspiration, Greg Erwin would also be inducted into that Hall of Fame.
Thanks, Sarah. So, go ahead, Vin. Why don't you?
Well, first of all, thank you. And, you know, Sarah and Renee probably understate their role in Track Town USA. He was big, he was outstanding, he was dedicated, he was passionate, and really all the things she talked about, I think, is a reflection. It can really be attributed to many of the people who participated in it, but these guys did a fantastic job. We appreciate the city, the City Council for helping us, you know, that none of this happens without you guys. And Track Town was an opportunity. Track Town 12 was a scary thing because we were trying to beat out Eugene 08, which was another great success. And we were both happy and a little apprehensive about the fact that we did get it, we were creating the best meet ever. But I just returned from a week in London and had an opportunity to catch up with a lot of the US athletes. And fortunately, it was raining all week in London. And, you know, we did spin.
They were well-prepared.
They were well-prepared. But now it's sunny there and our athletes have prepped. I, for one, am going to be really excited, I'm sure you all are, to cheer on Team USA. I'm going to be extra excited about cheering all the folks on that have Oregon ties. And I hope that you take a great deal of pride and satisfaction in helping to create the best meet ever, to select our team to be part of the world's number-one team. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just take one second to thank you all again. And I don't want this to sound anything but sincere. What the city does in terms of participation in Track Town is not only critical, but tremendously gratifying to Vin and I and everyone on the steering committee because we can't do what we're doing and execute on Vin's broader vision, which has many more exciting things down the road, without the incredible support of the city of Eugene. I mean, it is really outstanding and it goes beyond what we see at the event. And so, again, I want to reiterate Vin's comments, not only about the role that Sarah and Renee and so many other city employees play, but the value of the participation at the level of the city is, again, we know what other communities that would like to have this event are up against. And I don't think that their communities would rally around the event the way ours does. And you don't know how important that is for us in terms of getting 2016 and other things in the future. So, again, pat yourselves all on the back and, again, thank you very, very much for all your support.
Thank you. I'm going to read the resolution right now and ask for comments, and then we'll put it on the table and vote on it, okay? So, "Resolution in appreciation of the 2012 U.S. Olympic Team Trials Track and Field, known as Track Town 12. The City Council of the City of Eugene finds that: A) It is a great privilege and honor for Eugene to have been the host city for the 2012 U.S. Olympic Track and Field Trials that selected the athletes to represent Team USA at the London Olympic Games. B) The 2012 Olympic Trials were highly successful, setting attendance records and receiving accolades for excellent competitions, well-run operations, outstanding atmosphere, welcoming personnel and volunteers, and free public access to innovative activities. C) Hosting Track Town 12 has immeasurable, long-time positive impacts and was a tremendously constructive event for the community. D) The positive community impacts include economic benefit to the entire area, gains in community pride and unity, visibility on a national and international stage that highlights the area's beauty and livability, and advancement of city goals relating to sustainability, positive youth development, and accessibility. E) Organizing Olympic Trials is a huge undertaking that requires years of planning, countless hours of selfless work, the coordination of many organizations, agencies, and individuals, and marshaling of myriad resources. F) Many people and organizations contributed significantly to the development and success of the event. Partners in the local organizing committee include the University of Oregon, Oregon Track Club, the Cities of Springfield and Eugene, Lane County, State of Oregon, Travel Lane County, Lane Transit District, Eugene Water and Electric Board, Eugene and Springfield Chambers of Commerce, and Nike. Two individuals, Vin Lanana and Greg Erwin, have especially provided exemplary leadership and dedication to the 2008 and 2012 Olympic Trials and the revitalization of Track Town USA in Eugene. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eugene, a municipal corporation of the state of Oregon, as follows. Section 1, based on the above findings, the City Council hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to the partners of the local organizing committee for their work to plan and carry out Track Town 12 with all its associated community benefits. Extends its thanks to all the volunteers, fans, and businesses that contributed to this wonderful community success. Conveys its special, deep, and continuing appreciation to Vin Lanana and Greg Erwin for their vision, direction, and commitment in bringing the Olympic Trials to Eugene and leading the rebirth of Track Town USA. And pledges its support for maintaining Eugene's status and identity as Track Town USA and continuing to host a number of significant national and international competitions, including the Olympic Track and Field Trials. The resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption on the 25th day of July 2012. So, there you go. Now, I want, before we put it on the table to vote for, we'd like to give council a chance to express anything that they would like to express. Alan?
So, compliments to both of you for a job well done and everybody that participated. It was really an amazing event. I thought almost everybody thought it was a success. Even the restaurant owners in Eugene thought it was a success. So, and we came across so well. The parts I watched on TV looked great. The field looked great, the facilities looked great, the whole presentation was great. I will point out that Ethan Nelson, a city staff, was very integral into making this. Maybe the greenest sports event ever helped. And that would be something if we could claim that. I don't know how you figure that out, but we could just say it. I think it may be. So, thanks again for all the hard work that you do. I know it takes a lot to do that. And I got the chance to go to several of the events and it was really, truly fun. And so, I'm hoping for a three-peat though.
Sorry.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you as well to both of you gentlemen and congratulations. We have a wonderfully diverse community and different parts of our community celebrate and enjoy different things that occur in our community. But there's, in my opinion, not enough things that bring everybody together. And this is one of those things. We're all proud of this. It brings everybody in our community together to enjoy. So, good job and thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank you all for all the efforts that was put into this. The only thing I really want to say is I really appreciate that we can showcase this. I don't think, at times, the university gets enough credit for being like our economic engine. It generates a lot of money for our community, and the more that we can work on things together and showcase it, I think, the better off and we are all together. So, thank you both very much.
Anybody else from the table?
Thank you, Mayor. Vin, you made a presentation at my Rotary Club out at the airport prior to the Olympic Trials, and you made all kinds of promises about what the Olympic Trials were going to deliver. You came through. Congratulations. It was beyond anybody's wildest expectations. I'm proud to be a Eugenian, proud to be a UFO, former UFO student, and just proud of the fact that you have chosen Eugene as a place to live. Thank you very much.
And Betty?
I'll just say thanks to you, congratulations, actually, and thanks to the staff for all -- I saw the staff people out there working really hard.
Anybody else? Okay, so, I just want to say two more things, and then, Alan, you had something you wanted to add to this? Okay. I just wanted to say how proud I was of the fans, that there they were, out there, 20,000 strong, day after day, in the rain, cheering on everyone, doing that thing they do so well, of bringing everybody in with the sheer power of their enthusiasm. And I don't know where you get that anywhere else. So, I think, you know, if we can bottle that, that's a big thing. It makes me very proud. And then, just very selfishly, I'm so thankful that I had the -- you gave me the opportunity to put the medal around Ashton Eaton's neck. Thank you so much. I appreciate it very much. Okay, Alan.
I represent the area that includes the university and all the neighborhoods around there, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for the respect that you gave to the neighborhoods and the whole coordinate committee did about how they dealt with the neighborhoods and made the event pleasurable for everybody. I live within walking distance and walked to the event, so it was just really well-done and thank you for respecting the neighborhoods. It was well-done, too.
Okay, George, you're up for putting it out there for us to vote on.
I move to adopt Resolution 5071 in appreciation of the 2012 U.S. Olympic Team Finals Track and Field, known as Track Town 12.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes and we thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
Stick around, the fun is yet to...
Oh, yeah. We're going to switch gears now.
We're going to have another meet. How's that?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's good to feel good, you know? All right. All right, now, back to the resolution calling for a city election that had -- the motion has been put out there and it has been seconded, and Counselor Zelenka has read it, and now we're ready for anybody who wants to make any comments. Chris?
It's not all the time that the voters in Eugene are allowed to express their opinion on a particular issue. My principal question around whether or not to forward this to the voters, to let them decide, was whether it would wind up being a cost to the city. We have to be very mindful of the tax dollars that we spend and to do it wisely, and since this is an election that's not going to cost us, it's an opportunity for us to ask the voters their opinion without having to incur a cost. And so, for that reason, this doesn't say what the outcome of the election will be. It doesn't say what the outcome of the advice is, but it is simply an opportunity for the voters to express their opinion. And for that reason, I'm perfectly fine with sending this to the voters because it's an opportunity for us to ask them to participate in the democratic process. And so, for that reason, I'm perfectly fine because that's really what this measure's about, is, "Shall we send something to the voters to hear what they have to say on the issue?" And for that, it would be very hard to not be supportive of that.
Thank you. And, let's see, I've got Mike in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you're next.
I want to say some unpopular things, I'm sure. My first sentiment of this resolution was that it was nonsensical for us to spend our time doing this, when there are so many other important things for us to do. And then, I had some of the gentlemen who were in the room today mention that this, through us, is the only process by which this can make it to the ballot. There is no other way for it to occur. And so, for them to have the capacity to try and influence the process and the system, I completely understand it and I'm no longer, you know, it's not nonsensical, I just don't agree with it, and that's the second part. This is the second part where I'll say something I'm sure a lot of people will find objectionable, but I absolutely believe it and would be happy to debate it some other day. I don't think we have enough money in politics. I believe that when there are companies and people who spend in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in our local community to sell hammers and two-by-fours, which is a good thing, we ought maybe spend a little bit of money as a group together to talk about how we govern ourselves. And so, I don't have a -- that's the manner in which it gets done, and since the '73 Supreme Court decision in Buckley versus Vallejo, that's really, until you change that, you don't change that it's the process by which we have political discussions, is by buying advertising and doing a lot of it that way. And as long as that's the case, I think having discussions about how we govern ourselves is a good thing. Now, my problem with the idea of the objection to Citizens United and to a lot of the campaign finance stuff is this. It requires that you believe everyone who's taken money from a corporation or a union who's involved in politics is necessarily corrupt. Now, I don't believe there's anyone corrupt at the table, but everyone here has, in their campaigns, accepted donations from companies or from unions. So, I have a problem with the concept that that is a bad thing, or that it leads necessarily to people compromising their integrity. I don't necessarily believe it does. And so, I can't support the idea. I think the answer to bad political speech is more political speech, not less.
Alan, and then Patton and Betty.
So, I crafted this revised language with the help of Glenn Kleins, the attorney, and Charlie Swanson from We the People, and Bill Rogers from Common Cause to capture what we're trying to do and was trying to, well, with Glenn's help, be very faithful to the resolution that we passed. So, I think it really captures that also and mentions it several times in here and tried to use the same language. So, it's very closely aligned with the resolution that we had. And I encourage us to put it on the ballot, too, because in my screens, there are two. One is, "Does it cost a city money?" Which is same as Chris, and this is a miniscule cost to the city. But the second one is the gravity of the issue. And I think the Citizens United case and the amount of campaign spending that's going on today is of such gravity and will have such an amazing impact on elections, this one and the ones moving forward, that this truly does merit bringing this before the voters. Very, very, very few things meet that threshold for me, and that should be the case. And for the city, we've had two in the last 30, 40 years that, other than this one, that we brought that weren't related directly to city business. And I think we should tend to stick to it, city business, but this one has such importance that, and I think it was such a wrong ruling, that it merits having this on the ballot and I encourage people, if it passes, to vote for it when it comes up in the November ballot.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, thanks for pointing out what you said, Alan. You know, regarding it being a miniscule amount and what we're going to be, no cost, it's not no cost to the city that we put this on the ballot. We do have costs involved. And just a reminder, that I've said a number of times before, every single dollar could put six pounds of food on a hungry child's table. That being said, it is a small amount in terms of the total city budget. An issue that I have is how the process that things get before this council to go to such an extreme measure as putting things on the ballot. It is an extreme measure. We don't do it very frequently, so we have to do it very, very judiciously. And typically, it's highly local issues. In fact, exclusively, it's very local issues that we put on the ballot as a council of across the last 10 years. This is an exception. And by moving forward with this, we are making an exception to our standard rule, unwritten though it may be. It is the operating rule that we've had, that we don't -- we put local issues before people on the ballot. I'm going to vote yes on this, and for many of the reasons that Counselor Pryor pointed out, I believe it's, and also the fact, some of the things that Counselor Zelenka pointed out. However, there are so many issues that could come before us using a process like this that if we allowed this process to become the norm, the process that put this resolution in front of us today and Monday and when it was before us before, if we allowed it to be the norm, it's all we'd be doing because it's simply, we just don't have the time to spend this amount of our valuable council time, valuable resources that we have in the city, on any issue that wants to come forward. And we can, whatever the issue may be, we could bring up people who are exactly as zealous, exactly as impassioned as the folks who brought this before us. But bear that in mind as we move forward with this, this cannot be the norm. This can't be what we do as a rule, and that we have to be very, very judicious when we ask voters to make a decision of this magnitude. Thank you.
Betty?
This is very important to our democracy. It's therefore, it's important to all of us, and we're the only people who can further this in the sense of letting the people of Eugene vote on whether they want. And it's going to take a massive effort, of which we're doing just a small part, to change something that is corrupting politics more than it's already corrupted. I do wish that we had included the word "unions." There's no way that unions and corporations are comparable. Unions exist to protect the rights of workers and corporations exist to make a profit, so it's not comparable at all. But I'm going to vote for this because it gives us an opportunity for a discussion and a vote. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to support this also. It's pared down enough and it has enough meat on the bones for me to understand it. I just want to make a couple of comments regarding what I've heard here at the table. You know, campaign spending is overwhelming. As a layperson coming into this position, you know, eight years ago, and my campaign managers in the audience, and he can verify this, I didn't want to have to ask people for money. I thought that, you know, if you do good work and your name is out there, that should be enough to run a campaign. And I found out the difference. And so, it was really, it was really eye-opening to me, and I agree with you, Pat. If every dollar can put six pounds of food on a table, think about how much money has been spent just in this arena that could have furthered the cost, built homes for homeless people, you know, fed people. So, I'm not saying we would get to that point where there's no, where there's campaign limits and 200 bucks just to do your filing, but, you know, it really is kind of just a step in a direction that I think that the community should go. Money is, getting money to run a campaign is what kind of keeps some people out of politics because it is so overwhelming. You know, people who are not very astute at asking for money. I can ask for money for any cause at all. I don't have a problem. But when it comes to me, I just kind of like, oh, well, whatever. So, I just, I'm going to support this and I think it's great, and we'll let the voters decide what we want our people in D.C.
Pat?
Just a word about corporations. A company that I worked for recently is a corporation. I drew a lot of paychecks from this company and indeed has a very large payroll. Food Lane County is a corporation, and I have worked for Food Lane County in the past. Locally, we have companies like Jerry's Home Improvement Center, which is employee-owned and a corporation. So, to make a statement that corporations are in it for profit and in it for something other than helping people, just that blanket statement doesn't hold any water at all to me.
So, just a quick comment, and I think this is about not spending money, but unlimited spending of money. There's a big difference. And I also think that, you know, I don't think most people think every corporation is corrupt. What they're just speaking of is the unlimited ability for influencing the outcome of elections, and that's what people are concerned about. So, it does take money eater in terms of public finance or otherwise to get the word out about elections. So, it is a matter of how much and how we safeguard people's ability to participate equally with each other in the political process. So, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. Thank you.
Mayor, that was the motion to amend, so now you need to vote on the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you for reminding me of that. All right, so let's vote on the motion again. All those in favor? One, two, six. And in opposition, two. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. And that is our discussion of the downtown public safety zone.
Mayor, excuse me. You still need to appoint one or more counselors to the proponents committee to write the argument.
Okay. Who would like to serve in the capacity? Alan?
I'm already on the one for the bump.
Betty will...
Oh, that doesn't work.
Betty Taylor. Alan Zelenka. Need one more?
It doesn't have to be three.
Okay. Anybody else want to be part of that? Nobody's? Okay, two.
Okay, so, George, if you could make the motion to appoint, I think it was Betty and Alan.
Yep.
I move to appoint Counselors Betty Taylor and Alan Zelenka to... I move to appoint Counselors Betty Taylor and Alan Zelenka to service members of the proponents committee to prepare the argument and rebuttal in favor of the measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition. It passes. Thank you.
Actually, point of process, did we actually place that motion on the table? I don't recall a second yet.
Yes.
The first motion that we passed.
Yeah. Andrea.
Oh, that's right. I was seconding it before I said anything. Thank you.
It wasn't finished yet.
Because Glenn paused.
She was a little excited on the second.
Well, I heard the mayor say we got to vote quick.
That's right. And I appreciate you all for doing it. We're right, we're moving along just great. So, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And in the interest of time, I'll just turn it over to Chief Kearns to get us started on this conversation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me. Lieutenant Sam Campcar, who's in charge of our downtown program, will be presenting with me. And then, we also have a couple of other people from the downtown team. Our community service officer is Tony Weber. Tony's been with the police department for many years, and she just recently was promoted to community service officer and is doing a great job down there. And then Sergeant Larry Crompton, also promoted to sergeant this last year. He's been with our department for quite a while. And he, both of them are available to help answer questions as we go through the presentation, or after we complete the presentation. I'll give a little history here, and then we have sort of an abbreviated presentation to make for you, so that you can spend the time, remainder of the time, giving us some direction on what you'd like to see in the fall. We're having this work session. We thought it would be helpful for you to have this work session, so that you could give us some direction. We could make, we could work on the options before we get to September, when there would only be about seven days between a work session and a public hearing and time to take action, and then followed by the sunset date of the ordinance. So, that's why we're here today. The history of downtown efforts and this ordinance are, as you see on the screen there, the ordinance was initially passed in 2008. We had our twelve-point plan that was presented by the city manager in 2010, and among those were, was the, a review of the downtown public safety zone ordinance. The ordinance was extended in December of 2010. Earlier that year, you were in the new budget. City Council added ten municipal jail beds. Unfortunately, a year later, eighty-four jail beds from the county were closed, and that has an impact on our crime here in Eugene and our efforts downtown. The ordinance was extended after a couple of meetings in January and February of 2012. July 2012, a hundred more jail beds were closed, so that had made a difference. In July of this year, our downtown team is fully staffed, and they're working shifts, and I think having some effect. And then, of course, the ordinance sunsets in November. And we were very careful to pay attention to the things that you asked for when we met in February and January, January and February this last year, and they include details about why people are excluded, what their previous charges were, when they were excluded, how many of those people were homeless, and what reasons the judges have provided for dismissing or not granting some of those exclusions. And so, that's exactly the information that we've got for you today, between January and July of this year. And then, just as a reminder, this is what the zone looks like. It's bordered by Seventh Avenue on the north, Eleventh Avenue on the south, and then roughly Lawrence and Lincoln on the west side, and then Pearl on the east side. And we've carved out the county buildings and Eugene City Hall, so that people can still make court appearances. And of course, variances can be made for just about any location within the zone, and often are by judges.
Thank you, Chief. Members of the council, if I can focus your attention to the pie chart on the PowerPoint. The data that we're going to look at covers a period of roughly six months, January 1st through July 14th of this year. And this pie chart represents an analysis of thirty-four exclusion notices with a disposition. In other words, we know the outcome of these exclusions as of July 14th. Now, we've actually issued thirty-nine notices of exclusion to thirty-three people during this period. On the left-hand side, as you can see, seventeen people were excluded for the ninety days, and on the right-hand side, five were excluded by the municipal court for one year upon conviction or post-conviction. On the green, the ninety-day dismissed by the Eugene Municipal Court, those cases were seven. One of the questions that the council asked the last time that we met was that, the reasons by the municipal court for dismissals. And we asked those questions from the Eugene Municipal Court, and more specifically, we were provided four bullet points. One is exclusion was not in alignment with the council's intent. Another one, lack of defendant's criminal history. Another one, the defendant's actions justifying initial contact did not fall within the crimes set forth by the code. And last but not least, recommendation from the city prosecutor's office. And then, at the top, you'll see that there are five cases that are withdrawn. What that represents is the, those are management's judgment. In other words, we had three separate incidents and five notices of exclusions that came to our attention. And through a vetting process, we evaluated those reports, reviewed them, and based on the council's intent and what we heard from you from last time, we elected to not pursue those exclusions, and we threw those cases. The next graph represents race. Once again, the council wanted us to keep track of the race, the number of people who violated the DPSC order, as well as the housing status. Now, as you can see, the, out of thirty-three people during the last six months, thirty are listed as white or Caucasian. And as you know, the Census Bureau and the U.S. criminal justice system does not do an adequate job of capturing Hispanics, or as Hispanics are considered an ethnicity. And hence, thirty represents the Caucasian, which incorporates Hispanics as well. What we do know, through our, anecdotally, through our officers' testimony and feedback, is that the overwhelming majority of the people they come in contact with in the downtown core area are Caucasian, and not African-Americans or Hispanics. The second bar graph shows that out of the thirty-three people essentially who were excluded, six violated the exclusion notice. Twenty-seven did not either return to the downtown core area, or if they did, we didn't catch them. And with reference to housing status, twenty-one people reported no address, and that's a self-reported documentation. So, what's changed in the last six months? Let me cover police contacts first. We also learned that the overwhelming majority of the people that we came in contact with and who were issued notices of exclusions had at least ten police encounters. Now, what that number represents are things such as citations, arrests, non-criminal holds, and it doesn't include necessarily what we call FI cards, which is filled interview cards. The, in other words, we are contacting chronic violators and excluding those folks. And the, it should also be noted that this is a hand count, and we recognize that there may be some negligible errors associated with that. So, what's changed? We talked about the advocacy program last time, and we heard your feedback, and we provided, although the color is not quite yellow, the color that on the actual card is bright yellow that we, our officers hand out to every person who's excluded. It's pretty self-explanatory, and this is in addition to the brochure that the officers hand out to folks. Unfortunately, as of today, no one has requested to see an advocate. So, in the last six months, a few things have happened. One, as the chief mentioned, is we have a new team, Sergeant Larry Crompton and Tony Weber, as our dedicated public safety program manager, specifically downtown. We also have a new strategy. Our new strategy places greater emphasis on community policing efforts over enforcement. Now, we are going to continue to concentrate on enforcement efforts on the most chronic and prolific offenders, yet at the same time, we'll work diligently with others to find solutions that do not involve the criminal justice system, given the jail status. We've issued some new guidelines and expectations. We've listened to your feedback. We've also listened to the feedback from the Eugene Municipal Court judges, and we've given our officers more clear directions and expectations as to when they should or should not be issuing notices of exclusion. And more specifically, they are to concentrate their efforts on chronic offenders, prolific offenders, people with extensive criminal records within the downtown area, and those that are causing us problem down there. And last but not least, in the last six months, we've lost a handful of jail beds. So, on that sad note, I'm going to pass it over to the chief.
And then, the, we agreed that we would, the police department would provide you with summaries of every exclusion that's requested as of April 1st of this last year, and we've been doing that. And I think after one or two of those, we also started publicizing those, so that they were easily available to the people who'd been making public records requests about those, among others. And then, what I can tell you today is that quarterly, I can send those to you, again, only this time with the judicial decisions about whether or not the exclusions were granted. So, we'll send you the summaries back here in the next month, within the next month, that have the judicial decisions along with those. So, the options that are really available to you are probably obvious, but I'll mention them anyway. One is to renew, would be in the fall to renew the DPSZ, either with a new sunset date or to eliminate the sunset. One would be to eliminate the ninety-day exclusion. This is the one that is most often used. This is, most of the exclusions come under the ninety-day exclusion, which is pre-trial. And of course, the concern is that in a civil process, that's a decision that's made without legal representation by, for the defendant, although our city attorney tells us that that would withstand a constitutional challenge and is valid approach. And then, to allow the downtown public safety zone ordinance to sunset in November. And of course, we're looking for your direction, so that we can be as prepared as possible in September, when we have the next work session on this.
Ready to take questions?
Yes, we are.
I had a question. Have you thought about why no one's taking advantage of the advocacy program?
Yes, we have. And we have asked a number of folks, and quite frequently, our officers are passing out these cards, and same as well as the brochures. And it's, the response that we get is the same as the no-shows that we see when folks don't show up for the subsequent hearing with the judge, is that initially, they're excited about it, they're thrilled to know that there's an advocacy program available for them, just like they know that they can go out and see a judge. But then, at some point, something changes, and perhaps the circumstances of their life, and they just don't make it.
And the other question I have is the, it seems to me, sometimes we have a meshing of the safety zone exclusion and park exclusion, and those are probably part of the same thing, but they're different from each other. And can you sort of explain how that plays out in our downtown in particular?
Sure. Do you want me to? Sure. So, as you know, the park exclusion has been around for years, and we've been utilizing that program for quite some time now, and it's a thirty-day exclusion. The, what we've done is that we've instructed our officers to look at the totality of the circumstances and see what is the most appropriate response in any particular given circumstances. So, if they have someone who's a chronic problem, chronic violator in a park, that for some reason, we just can't convince them to stop committing the crimes or whatever behavioral issues that they may be displaying, then at that point, the appropriate thing to do would be to take advantage of the park exclusion program, to exclude them from the park, but yet allow them to continue to come downtown and use other services in downtown. But there are times when, so, as a matter of practice, we try not to, not to issue someone a park exclusion as well as a downtown exclusion, unless it's someone that is a prolific offender, that we absolutely do not want to see in the park blocks or the parks or anywhere within the downtown area.
So, my final thing for right now is we hear a lot of conversation about people getting tripped up on jaywalking downtown, and seeming like, seeming that it's arbitrarily enforced, and just wanted to hear what you had to say about that, too.
We've had a few instances where we have issued citations for crossing a road at least a ninety-degree angle, otherwise known as jaywalking. But given the number of contacts and the citations and the arrests that the officers are involved in, those numbers are rather small in numbers. But be it as it may, we've been learning from our successes and our failures, and we've been hearing the feedback that, from the council, as well as other constituents. So, we are very judicious about it now, as we go about doing that.
I have Mike in the queue, and then I think I saw George's hand. Yes, Mike and Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. To answer the question that was put up at the end, that you're here to get kind of from us, my review of all of the data, my review of the, those times that the ordinance has been used, my conversations with officers, and my work with the police commission, leads me to the easy conclusion that this is something I would like to see us continue, and I'd like to see us remove this sunset provision, frankly. I don't know how it'll actually go, or how the rest of my colleagues feel, but that's certainly mine. There's another kind of thing, and I'm going to ask the both of you. Both of you, I consider friends and good guys, and frankly, extreme professionals and people I respect a lot. But I'm going to ask you some hard questions here. Now, hard in a way that you may find interesting. I want you to be very frank. We often have discussions at this table about the difference between status and behavior. That there are, you know, we don't want to penalize people for a status so much as behavior. That's the reason the ordinance is written. But there are those in our community that come before council on a regular basis accusing your officers of using this ordinance based on status, that they're trying to over-enforce against homeless people, as opposed to enforce for behaviors. I've even heard it at this table. Now, I have to tell you, knowing a lot of the officers involved, I get offended when I hear that. And I can't imagine how, as professionals, it makes you feel. But I'm going to ask you to be real frank, both of you, and to respond, if you would, to, how does that make you feel? What are your thoughts about those who would say, your officers are using this to enforce and to try and get homeless people out of our downtown?
Well, we hear that loud and clear. And, did you want me, chief?
Looked at you after the question.
I know. I'm sorry. I love you, brother, but I want to hear this. I do, because I'm tired of hearing it.
We are, and when I say "we," I don't mean just myself and the chief, but our supervisors, the members of the department, we're all very sensitive to that. We recognize the severity of it. We recognize that it is, that the perception is out there. So, we continually talk to our officers about the difference between profiling versus criminal profiling. And we talk to them about the, from a legal perspective, and more importantly, from down in here, what it means in our hearts, and how judicious we need to be in order to apply the law. And we learn as we move forward, and our officers do an outstanding And our officers do an outstanding job of applying the law and making sure that they don't violate people's 14th Amendment rights. And unfortunately, quite a few people that we come in contact with do have, do not have a residence, a home address. So, if you were to just simply look at the statistics, the statistics alone, without looking at the big context, it would appear as though that they may be profiling just the homeless folks.
Chief, your thoughts on that? Sam also teaches our Perspectives on Profiling course, and not just in our department, but around the state. So, our, this team has, is one of its managers, an expert on how to avoid profiling people based on race and other factors. And also, the Eugene Police Department's performance, our officers' conduct is followed pretty closely. We have a civilian oversight system. People bring complaints. Internally, we initiate complaints when we think that we're not doing our work as it should be done. And we study the question of profiling pretty closely. We're imperfect, but we do pay close attention to it, just as Sam mentioned. The other reality that we don't often discuss is that, I don't know what percentage it is, but a large percentage, maybe nearly all the people who are homeless in Lane County have little or no interaction with police. A small percentage of people who are homeless do. And it isn't because they're homeless that they have interaction with police, it's because of the way that they behave. And our focus in our downtown efforts is on behavior. It has not, it is not on status. Status becomes a factor for obvious reasons, but our enforcement efforts and our efforts to make downtown safer has everything to do with behavior. And in fact, I think Tony told us a story about a homeless man who commented to her the other day that he is grateful for the increased police presence downtown because he's safer. This is a homeless person who isn't intimidated by police because he's not committing crimes.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'd also like to say, as somebody who's spent many, many years working downtown, and has a good number of friends who do as well, I have a lot of contact with people down there regularly, and I've heard from many people that they like the way our downtown is progressing, both from the standpoint, buildings that are getting, that are going up, the increased public safety presence, the work that you gentlemen are doing is paying off, and I think it's working. Okay? We're not, I don't think to where we want to be yet, but we're getting there in a good fashion. So, I guess, tell me from the standpoint of the day-to-day work your officers does, do, why this is an important tool? Tell me the typical case they'd use it in, and why is it an important tool to maintain?
Maybe we can have Sergeant Crompton come on up here.
I've got a good example.
You have to use a microphone.
Need the microphone, so those watching on TV can hear you.
No, that's good.
I hurt my feelings. Hi, again, I'm Larry Crompton. A few weeks ago, we had a, we dealt with an individual who, he's committed some crimes downtown, thefts, behavioral crimes, hadn't been excluded. We're aware of the things that he does. And the officers were out in the parks and found this subject with a minor, obvious minor. He's in his 30s, she was 15. And they were engaged in sexual activity. After interviewing the two, they determined that this subject met the female down at LTD. And there's a reason why these people come downtown, because we have a lot of vulnerable youth who are dealing with issues. People who tend to commit these types of acts go downtown to find them, to seek them out. This exclusion will help us protect these kids. And he will be excluded. He's been arrested, he's being charged with the crimes. He's going to get out, we know that. We've already talked about jail space. At least we know that there's something that's going to keep him away from downtown. If he comes downtown, he goes to jail again. And it seems to be, as times progress, one of the only ways we're going to be able to protect these incorrigible youth. So excluding him is so important, as with excluding the drug dealers who go down there who try to sell their drugs to these young kids. And also, excluding some of these kids, I say kids, but young adults, in preventing them from coming into this target-rich environment where they can buy their drugs. So hopefully that answers, just gives you a few examples of why we do what we do.
It does, and I thank you. Sergeant Fitzpatrick was kind enough to share other stories with us. I'm just hopeful that we can extend this and that we will understand the value of this tool to the officers. Thank you.
George Bowling?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just right up front say that I, too, am in favor of extending the existing downtown public safety zone without a sunset. I, too, have been hearing from people that frequent and work downtown, and they are ecstatic about the presence of the police officers downtown and how they're noticing a change in the atmosphere. They're feeling less intimidated to go downtown. And I'm hearing from more people that are now starting to go downtown for the first time in years, because they have heard from their friends how it's changing downtown. And I want to thank all the folks that you have assigned to that detail for the work that they're doing. It's not easy work. You're getting a lot of unfair criticism, in my opinion, and I appreciate the work that you're doing to make downtown a safer place for everybody. You know, the claim that you're targeting homeless people, to me, never held any water. It's, from the very start, this has been about targeting behavior. And, you know, granted, the statistics show that there are more homeless people involved in this than there are people with addresses. But if you want to play the statistics games, why are the non, or why are the Caucasian folks aren't up in arms? Because you've got 30 out of the 33 people that have been involved in this are Caucasian. So, you know, you can bend the statistics any way you want and make an argument for any way you want, but what it boils down to, this is not about profiling, it's about addressing behaviors. And that's what it was from the very start, and I think that's what it is going to continue to be. And I'm glad to see that you've kind of tweaked it internally. To me, it sounds like now you have kind of checks and balances in it, you know, double-checking the work, not only by the troops out on the street, but by the supervisors and by the management, working hand-in-hand with the court. And I'm just, I'm just, you know, really upset that more and more people aren't taking advantage of the advocacy that has been set up for them. And I encourage your officers to continue maybe a little more effort in explaining that advocacy that is available to them when the time comes for them to go to court. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant Campcar, thank you to begin with for starting, for all of you coming, thank you for taking time out of your day. I know this is an added duty. So I just want to say thank you, Sam, for pointing out the fact that I'm considered a white person on the census, okay?
That's true.
So, you know, so that really isn't an easy way to go about. Everything else would be anecdotal. So I have a couple of questions about this, because I've had heartburn, I've supported it, I've been, you know, I've had, I've been watching it, and I don't really hear what you guys hear. I don't know where you guys, I don't hear those things. I guess my, because I don't have one in my neighborhood where there's as much crime. Anyway, so tell me about, is it really necessary to continue to write violations on people who have 100 contacts with police? What is the goal there, side of curiosity?
Well, we do lodge those people in jail, and the officer makes a judgment about whether or not they should be issued a citation or placing them in jail. And as Lieutenant Campcar pointed out, we're looking for alternatives to enforcement to try and change the behavior in the downtown area. But yeah, it's a frustration to either lodge or issue anybody a citation for a crime in Lane County right now, absolutely.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking, I'm not talking about somebody stabbing somebody or somebody robbing or breaking an entering, or even trashing a car. I'm talking about, you know, jaywalking, you know, open containers, things that would other people, you know, that are against the law, but definitely, you know, do they rise to the level of really giving a ticket? So, Chief, can you tell me, what is going to be success with this? Tell me when is it going to be to the point where this is not necessary? You have a myriad of officers now all down there, correct? We're at full staff?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that was kind of the ultimate goal, was to get to that staffing level.
Sure. Sorry.
So can you tell me at what point is, how are you going to view it as successful?
I think the reason that, to answer your question, I think one of the reasons that it's useful is because jail isn't all, isn't much of an alternative today. And the people that engage in criminal behavior downtown, engage in that criminal behavior downtown. It is, we, it is the highest concentration of these types of crimes happen downtown. There is no other neighborhood like this. Excluding people from that environment will help to reduce the disorder there, and we've been pretty careful with it. This, the exclusion ordinance is a very small variable in the entire effort to make Eugene a safer place. So it'll be very difficult, it would be very difficult to tie the exclusion ordinance to a successful effort to make downtown safer. But I think when we see what the effects of the downtown team are, as we continue our efforts with data-led policing, which has played a role in addition to the downtown team, when we've seen a concentration of problems in the core, and if we can increase our jail capacity so that people who shouldn't be permitted to continue to commit crimes in our community aren't out there, then I think the community will feel less of a need to have this type of add-on to our, the tools that we have to try and manage safety downtown.
So my next question to you, and I think I asked this last time, but I like to, we ask the same questions at times. Is there anything within your policies and procedures that can get you to this place without having the council to interact, to actually give the decree that this is a legal thing?
We don't have a way to exclude anybody from a part of the city within, the police don't have the authority to do that. I could, no.
So, getting back to the chronic offenders, you know, the officers write tickets, they go to the court, and I don't really know what happens. So is there a cost for all this? I mean, does it cost us money for the officers to continually cite people who they know aren't going to appear, who they know aren't going to go to jail?
Yes, there is.
So is that cost-effective to continue that practice?
Is it cost-effective? Is it important? Yes. I think it's important that people should be held accountable to, for bad behavior that the rest of society is also held accountable to. I think that the criminal justice needs, system in Eugene needs to find ways to address people's behavior that's tailored to their needs. Some people commit crimes because of a mental health condition, some people commit crimes because of their addictions to alcohol or drugs, and some people are just living in a lifestyle where crime is the way that they do things, they get things done. And so ideally, we would have a system so robust that we could address each of those in their, in the ideal individual way.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have a second round.
Okay, I'm just going to let you know that we're going to try to wrap this up by quarter after. Chris?
Thank you. This is always a challenging conversation, because we're dealing with something that has what I want and what I don't want all wrapped into it. And as I said before, I would support 100% getting rid of the exclusion zone the day we have something else to replace it with. And at this point, we don't have that alternative, and I will support anyone who wants to work on a viable alternative to replace it with. But until we have that, we've got to work with what we've got. And so that's kind of the frame of mind I approach this with, is what can we do with what we've got to make it work as well as it can? That's where what I want and what I don't want become meshed together. What I want is for this to be applied in a way that's very consistent with what the council's intent is. And I'm incredibly appreciative of all the staff who come, because what's the best way to hear what the council wants than to be here? It's also great to have staff here so that you can see the faces of the people that are actually enforcing this exclusion zone. They're not nameless, faceless entities. These are people who are trying to interpret the will of the council and trying to do it as well as they can. Does that mean it's perfect? I appreciate the chief saying, "No, it's not perfect." So my goal would be to say, how can we make this more effective or work better? When I look at the dispositions of the exclusions, I say, that's a lot of dismissals, that's a lot of withdrawals, what can we do to work to improve those numbers? Whether it's through how we apply it, the way in which it's done, that's not saying I want to get rid of it, it's saying, let's figure out how to make this more so it's consistent with what the council wants. I am incredibly appreciative of the notion that we're trying to manage behavior and not so much the condition of the people. And if somebody is behaving badly, but they also happen to be homeless, it's easy to say, were they excluded because they're homeless, or were they excluded because they were behaving badly? What I really want to clearly say is, it's not because they were homeless, it's because they were behaving badly that should be the determining criteria. That really should be it. And I've asked Judge Allen, when he's been here, is that the criteria? And his response to me has been, I look at all of these cases, and except for a few, I believe that's what's trying to be done. I would just emphasize, let's keep trying and try even harder to make sure that is what's being done here. Which gets back to the notion of, what do you do with somebody who's being cited because we know we've had a lot of contact with them, we know they're undesirable because of behavior in the past, and we're citing them now for not walk, not crossing the street at a 90-degree angle? Every contact is its own contact. And I may have had 100 contacts in the past, but this is the, this is a contact that needs to be evaluated on its own merits. Is it, does it look, or does it pass the smell test for being harassment? And I may have 100 contacts with somebody, but if, if I'm giving them a ticket for not crossing at a 90-degree angle, I wouldn't get it. And if they do, I'm just saying, consider that individual contact on its own merits and not the result of the previous 99 that went before it.
Do you want another round?
Oh, am I out of time? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I don't do that very often.
No, you don't. George?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I, I don't really believe that police are targeting homeless people. I think, there may have been a couple of, you know, exceptions to that, but I think they see someone committing a violation, one or another, and they issue them a citation, and that person happens to not have a permanent address. So I really don't believe that there, that there's a strategy to say, "Aha, there's a homeless person, and I'm going to go give him a ticket." I don't think that's happening. So I, you know, the question before all of us, I'm just kind of going back to the beginning of the whole thing, and so I pulled out some older documents and kind of did a review. And there's one here from the Downtown Safety Task Team of January 27th, 2010. And one of the main goals was to make downtown safer and reduce crime. And I think the make the downtown safer is perhaps we're moving that way. And I, but have these goal, the question I'm asking myself, because I'm not going to prejudge how I'm going to vote on this, you know, after we come back from our break. I want to, I want to, I like some of the changes that have been made, and I, and I want to, you know, review all the new, any new statistics that you can provide us, and I've got, I've got some suggestions. I think some of the things you've done are big improvements, so. But, so, you know, my question to myself is, have these goals been achieved? And if so, has there been a cost to the surrounding neighborhoods? People that have been excluded from downtown, have citations and violations and crimes gone up in specifically Whittaker and the West University and Midtown? Because we've been hearing anecdotally from some of the merchants in Midtown that they've been, they've been having a lot, a lot more problems with some of the same types of people that are being targeted with this program. And I, I'll tell you, right now, I mean, you know, with or without jail beds, I'm having a hard time seeing how the downtown public safety zone is making downtown safer and reducing crime. I think that the addition of the extra officers, more dedicated, you know, presence, I think that makes an enormous difference. I think just the sight of a police officer walking down the street or walking over by a group that's misbehaving in the park, I think that alone is just outstanding. And so I, it's just, I'm asking myself these questions. So, and I think that, you know, the increased police presence has been enormously beneficial. So, and then I looked at another document. I do have a question. I see that.
You want another round, George?
Yes, I'd like another.
That talks quick today, doesn't it? Seems fast today.
I'm just going to have to say that, you know, you may end up having to pass some of this information forward in a different way. Alan?
So, thank you, Chief and Sam, for the Lieutenant Campcar.
Oh, is it Lieutenant?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I said she demoted him.
Thanks for all those changes that you made. I think they're, and the data, I think those are all movements in the right direction. And I, from the stats, the stats show us, it is used in a very limited manner, and usually on bad people. I, I agree with George, and disagree with George, the other George, that we can say that the exclusion zone is what's made downtown better. I think downtown being better is a result of many, many things that we've done downtown. It may not have anything to do with the exclusion zone, it's almost impossible to tell, because you can't pull it out. I mean, we've got the 12-point plan we put in place, we've got a full complement of officers downtown, which is now nine. All the new development, the new eyes on, on the street, all those things have worked to make downtown a better place and safer place.
Prepartum.
So, the question for me is, is this the right tool now, and for moving forward, among the many that we have? And should it be continued or modified? Or, you know, for instance, just to allow exclusions after conviction, which is what I was advocating for originally? So I have a couple of questions for you. One is, the mayor asked about the advocacy and noticed that, and I noticed too, that no one has taken advantage of the advocacy program, which seems would, I'm curious, I can go into a little bit more detail why that's so. And, I mean, if nobody takes advantage of it, it either isn't being offered correctly, or it doesn't, it doesn't work. Or, at the same time, we have all these statistics about people that never take advantage of the opportunities to go to a hearing right, five days after, nobody's done that. So, and I think an advocate could help in that arena, so.
If I may, I can answer that. From what I'm experiencing the last six weeks that I've been on the team, the majority of these people, if, if they question what occurred and they want to challenge it, there's another avenue that we, we make readily available, and that's through the auditor's office. A lot of them feel more comfortable going to the auditor. With these complaints, the complaints then come back to the supervisor, or if you're talking downtown team, they come back to me, and I investigate the allegations. So the advocacy is something new for them, they see the little card, they hear about it. Everybody knows about the auditor's office. That's what our, that's, that's our city, that's our complaint process, and that's the route that they've been taking.
It's also, this is the population of defendants who don't go to arraignment and won't show up for trials unless they're in custody. So the concept-
Regardless of-
Yeah, regardless. So they, they are represented by attorneys when they're in jail. So the, the idea that they might go to an advocate, work with the advocate, and show up for the hearing is hard to imagine, I think, for most of them.
That makes sense. And the other question I have is about the, at the end of the second page of the AIS, you say, another criticism, criticism of the 90-day exclusion is that it's issued as a result of an underlying charge which is not adjudicated when the 90-day exclusion is imposed. To address these concerns, staff is developing an alternative for council consideration to eliminate that 90-day exclusion. So that's around the pre, pre-exclusion, pre-hearing exclusions.
We have, we've met with the municipal court to see if there isn't a way to impose a probation that could be enforced, but it's not likely. If a judge places, and that can't even be done until after their, until after their sentence. So they need to be found guilty to be placed on probation. So a pre-trial condition that would restrict where they're allowed to be in public places would be a difficult place to go, it sounds like. I'm not sure we can create that situation here.
And the other question relates to the dismissals, the seven that were dismissed in the January through July pie chart. Four dismissed due to judicial discretion, two dismissed because of an early charge that was not eligible for exclusion, and one dismissed, maybe this is more troubling, was not, was dismissed, and not prosecuted due to lack of resources. Can you talk about those seven dismissals, and what does it mean, judicial discretion and, and lack of resources?
Without going into too much detail, because each case has its own scenario, if I can just give an overall overview of that. The, the lack of resources from the district attorney's office, as you're aware of, basically because of the funding, and what happens is, the way that the ordinance is written, anytime the Circuit Court or the Eugene Municipal Court elects to not, or the city prosecutor's office elect to not prosecute, that automatically the exclusion gets, gets dismissed. So the, the ordinance doesn't provide an exemption for lack of funding, saying that, you know, there's probable cause, or this was a good case or good arrest. So it's, it's out of the court's hands. The, the other part's the judicial discretion, we have asked the municipal court for that, and basically what that boils down to is that the judges are exercising what they believe to be the council's intent.
All right. No, you're done.
Could you give us more detail about those?
We'll work on those for you.
All right, I'm going to do Pat and Betty, and then we're going to close it out unless somebody's got something really pressing they have to say.
Thank you. I'd just like a little bit of help on questions that, that I, I'm asked, and there are only two of them. You know, I was riding my bicycle downtown on the street not too long ago, and I hopped off onto the curb, and I was on my bicycle, and one of the officers said, could you please get off your bike? I feel I was targeted on that. No, the, but that is the nature of one of my questions. When people ask me if we're targeting a particular group of people downtown, can I, can I honestly and truthfully say, no, we're not? We're targeting, we're addressing behavior and not, not a type of person? Can I, can I truthfully tell people we're not doing that?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And secondly, why do we have an exclusion zone downtown, and why don't we have them in other parts of the city? And if we do exclude people from downtown, don't they just go to Bethel, or don't they just go to wherever else in town it may be? I heard the term a target-rich environment. Can I truthfully answer that there are, that the nature of the concentration of people downtown lends itself more easily, more readily to the type of crime that is being addressed by the exclusion zone? Can I, can I say?
Well, anytime there's an environment where there's a high level of this type of crime, there are conditions that are enabling it. So there's conditions downtown that enable a congregation of people that commit these types of crimes that doesn't exist anywhere else in Eugene. And probably the most significant of those is the LTD transfer station, for just less than $2, anyone can arrive from any place in Lane County to one place. The people that we arrest have really no other business, for the most part, downtown when we contact them, apart from being with one another there. And that's not a crime, in fact, obviously. And in fact, when we have increased our presence in the last several weeks, without, while conducting less enforcement, the people who linger downtown are grateful because it's a safer, there's a safer feeling. There aren't necessarily fewer people there who are homeless, but it is a safer feeling that's there, and that's what we're trying to create.
Thank you. That clarifies things for me, and I feel that I have, I'm well equipped with the answers. I'd like to thank Sergeant Crofton for the target-rich environment nomenclature, borrowed, I think from Maverick, right? In Top Gun. So, thank you.
Betty?
Oh, how can I follow that? I think there's no, it's no secret that I don't support the exclusion zone. Can do without the laugh. I, I think that what George said is very true, that the presence of more officers makes people behave better. I know that it makes me wonder, what did I do wrong? I think even a police car makes you think. And I think what we need, well, do you think if we had more people, just people, downtown, that things would be better?
I think that, together with the other efforts that we're putting in place downtown, will improve things. The activities that the, the LARQ has put in place downtown have made a difference.
I think those things are great, and I think anything we can, and I have some ideas, but we don't have time now, but anything we could do to get more people downtown, I think is good, as well as having the police presence. And we need to, we still need a youth center downtown.
So, Betty, George?
Real quick, I just want to clarify something. I did not intend to make it sound like that I was giving credit to the downtown public safety zone for all the improvements downtown. I realize there are other things. I realize there was the increased presence of more officers, all the redevelopment going on downtown.
Prepartum.
We were talking about this, we were talking about this, and that's why I directed the comment that I made the way I made it. I, I realize there are other things that are helping it. This is just one of many tools that we have available to improve the downtown, and I think we should keep it.
So obviously, this is a discussion that we all have a lot of concern about, and a lot of input, and I would not want to end this discussion with thanking you for the work that you're doing, and also thanking you for your effort to respond to the concerns that the council has had. So, and my final comment on this is simply that all neighborhoods are important, but our downtown, we want it to feel like it belongs to everyone, which makes it a very unique place in our community, and one that needs to be healthy. So, thank you all very much, and we will move into our last item before we wrap it up here in the McNutt Room. Thank you very much. So we wanted to take a few minutes. Margaret has some things, she's going to bring it out now. You each have a little special present from me to commemorate the day, a little book about our city. And I hope you enjoy that. And Margaret's bringing out a little cupcake and drink. It is a sparkly, sparkling apple juice, I believe.
Well, there you go.
Is the official meeting over?
Thanks.
And while Margaret's walking around the table, I'm going to make a few comments here.
Toast, yeah.
And then we'll toast.
Eggs and toast, even.
So, favorite for the toast.
Sains and cider for the toast.
Right. You want to take one for George Brown, too?
That one's got gorgeous. I'm just going to drive over there.
Take one of each, and then the extra.
Thank you.
Is Sarah coming back?
No.
Oh, he's not?
Ever, again?
Is he gone? George?
Not George, Sarah.
Oh, Sarah. So as you all know, we'll be moving out of City Hall next month, and this is our, this is our final week before we go on break, so we've, in a, in a way, already said goodbye to the council chambers, and today is the McNutt Room. We're going to land for a little while in a new location across the street at Lane County. This is a significant move for nearly half a century, 48 years. Eugene City Hall has served as a center of municipal government in Eugene. It's important, I think, to all of us that we pause to mark this transition. Eugene City Council first met in this city hall on Monday, June 8th, 1964, and as I was looking it up, I noted that that's the same year as the Civil Rights Act came into being. In the years that have followed, if these walls could talk, what stories they would share about our achievements, hopes, and dreams? But would they tell us about our debates and about our hard times and triumphs? I was just thinking about it, during this period of time, this country's gone through the war on poverty, anti-war movement, environmental movement, women's movement. Timber has changed as the single industry that was the base of the economy of Oregon. Our state land use policies have come into being, just to name a few of the things that have gone on in these years. Over the last 48 years, our elected officials, city staff, and community members have met and worked together here at City Hall to make Eugene a safer, healthier, more vibrant community for all people. We are standing on the shoulders of those who came before us in so many ways. One of those was a vision, and I, I think this is an important thing, as I was reading the article in the paper this morning, I was sorry it wasn't in there. When this city hall was planned, one of the main differences was that you didn't have to go through a gatekeeper to get to any part of the city. You would go directly into the door, to the police, to the fire, to the city manager's office, to the mayor's office, to the courts, to human services. Everything was a direct entry. And that was done purposely and designed to speak on behalf of democracy and egalitarianism. I will continue to make that a commitment as mayor and city council in the 21st century. Completed in 1964, Eugene City Hall was a winning design, I'll look over my, of a northwest architecture design completion, the architects Warren and Longwood Construction, Gail Roberts Company. Over the last half-century, Eugene's population has more than tripled, and the city government has outgrown this facility. At the same time, as we are all too very aware, the condition of City Hall has deteriorated, and we have become aware of this structure's vulnerability to heavy damage or complete collapse in even a moderate earthquake. Now it is time to plan the next chapter, which is why you have this, for Eugene City Hall to provide safe and adequate facilities for our city staff, our elected officials, and most of all, the public, in a place we can be proud of. City offices and staff teams are moving from City Hall to new locations. The seat of Eugene City Government, the offices of the mayor, and the city council, along with the city manager's office, will soon move temporarily to the Lane County Public Service Building, right next door. So today, I ask you to lift your apple juice and, and toast not only what this city hall has meant for the last 48 years, but also for us to turn and look toward the future, where we will have another great city hall, and many more decisions to come in the next years.
Cheers.
Now we have to sing for "He's a Jolly Good Fellow."
To whom?
The city hall.
To Earl. All right, all right. All right, lead it off, George. Can you do, I can't do all these, I can do one. Okay, you can do "For He's a Jolly Good Fellow." Okay?
From Moskowitz, sure.
For he's a jolly good fellow, for he's a jolly good fellow, for he's a jolly good fellow, which nobody can deny.
Just cut it off.
Anybody else have any good words for the, for the future here?
As my friend Ken Keasy would say, with a long, strange trip this has been, I'm sure, for the city council, and I look forward to the future.
Thank you, thank you.
Totally forward from here.
At this time, do we have any idea that we're going to be renaming the area where we do our work sessions in the McNutt Room and carry on the tradition?
I don't think we know that yet. That's, I think the thing that I, I think we're also committed to, and I really would want the public to know that, is I think we're committed to making a decision about the direction we're going to go as, as quickly as we can possibly do it, and then move it into motion. And as I've been saying, it's my intention that we be in that new facility within the next two years.
I think we should call it the River View.
Anybody else have anything for the good order? Pat?
You know, when I first came to town-